Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, February 27th. And we will begin our public statement, read by Commissioner Madeira.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Madeira. We'll move on now to our department's updates. We'll begin with the Health Department. Ms. Kelly, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. As of February 25th, emergency room visits for COVID-like illnesses have decreased, as well as wastewater concentrations. Flu activity still remains very high at this time. According to the Indiana State Board of Animal Health, Indiana has confirmed bird flu infections on 12 farms across the state. The risk of humans becoming infected is low. People can get infected if the virus is inhaled, or if it gets in a person's eyes, nose, or mouth. Instances of sick or dead birds can be reported by calling 1-866-536-7593. And as always, we have vaccines available through our public health clinic. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. TSD, we don't have our captioning up on the screen. If you could arrange that, that would be great. I'll see if there's any comments from my colleagues or questions. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Climate Resiliency Plan. Ms. Madison Luna is joining us to tell us all about it. Thank you, TSD. Perfect.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here today. So I'm here to just give a little overview again for the Climate Resiliency Plan. Just a little background, as I know it's on the agenda today. Next slide, please. There we go. So just a brief introduction. My name is Madison Luna. I am a current second semester MSES student at the O'Neill School. I did my undergrad at Drake University, and I'm from Romeoville, Illinois. And I just want to give a brief pause to mention a lot of the other fellows who have since graduated, moved on. Just because I'm the one presenting here today, being able to hopefully push this over the finish line, this was a huge collaborative effort, not only with fellows, but county staff as well. So just taking a minute to appreciate all of the hard work that has gone into this. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview of the Climate Resiliency Plan. So you first heard about this on April 24th, and that was presented to you by Victoria Seast. Some of the comments that we received from that is that we needed to add more agricultural sections, because as we all know, Monroe County is not just Bloomington. So that was definitely some great feedback. So we went ahead and added those in. We came back December 11th to present those to you. And then by the request of Commissioner Jones, I'm here again today just to give that brief overview one more time. So the whole goal of the CRP is to kind of provide guidance in light of climate change. As we know, climate change is this large ambiguous thing. So being able to plan for it is a little bit difficult, but we do understand that it's an important task to undertake, and that this plan kind of aims to try and give us a direction to move here for the future. And then also, just wanted to mention that we did meet with various department heads. So they are aware of the contents of the plan and the actions that we're suggesting, and they were able to give commentary on kind of the feasibility of some of the things that we had suggested. Next slide. So the plan itself comes from the Implementation Matrix. So this matrix comes together from two different workshops that were held. The first was with a group of various stakeholders in different sectors throughout the county to identify vulnerabilities in areas where we see there could be potential issues moving forward. So from there, those vulnerabilities, they held another workshop to identify strategies in order to combat these vulnerabilities. And from there, we have come up with actionable items to try and address those vulnerabilities. So in total, there are 19 vulnerabilities, 39 solutions, and 93 suggested actions. Next slide. So this is just a little bit of the setup here. So there are seven themes. So while we did add the agricultural section, we also decided to add a recreation section as well, just because we know hiking, fishing, recreational things are also an important part of the county, and that will be something that will need to be addressed with climate change. As we know, droughts, weather events, things like that, that come up in the future. So this is just a little snippet of what the plan looks like on the right here. Next slide. And then this is just a snippet of what the agricultural section looks like, and some of the actions that we have there include encouraging the use of cover crops in agricultural fields, increasing sustainable practices, as well as preventing food waste, and also encouraging personal connections to food sources. Next slide. So overall, we understand, again, climate change is this huge thing, and we don't have an exact roadmap. This is supposed to be just kind of a jumping off point. So it is intended to be kind of a living document. As we move forward, there are going to be changes that probably need to occur, just because, again, we don't know exactly what the future holds. So we're suggesting that it's updated and reviewed annually, just to make any changes as necessary, and also that it be overseen by an implementation committee, which I actually have the pleasure of going to the Environmental Committee meeting. And we do have someone who will be spearheading that, which he's actually here right now. So that's exciting. And also, in the matrix, we understand this is a large undertaking. So we did try and provide as much resources as possible with feasibility, funding opportunities, programs that already exist as well. So yeah, the overall hope for this is to hopefully make Monroe County prepared in the event of the inevitability of climate change. Next slide. That's it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your work and your acknowledgement of others who have worked on this. And it does take a lot of people and a lot of time to get something like this right and ready to be adopted, and also to be revised as needed. And that's an important thing, that this is not a static document, but a living document. So I'm glad you made that point. Let's see if there's any comments. Commissioner Madeira?
Yes. So I think this represents the best of collaboration between the community and nonprofits and local government. And this is a model that we could follow in so many other areas. And also, I think that this is, resiliency is the proper word across all of these areas, because we can't speak in terms of prevention anymore, now less than ever before. And we must think about how we're going to negotiate this threat. And so I think that this is a wonderful model. And also, I think that there's some precedent. There's precedent in cities, but we are the first county to have done this in the state. And that is also worth celebrating.
Good point. Commissioner Jones, you were instrumental in this, and, you know, thank you. Thank you. And I wanted to see if you have comments or anything you wanted to add.
Yes. Well, I definitely want to very much thank everyone who worked on this. It really was a pretty major undertaking, and yet everyone stuck to it and did see it all the way through to the end. I'm particularly excited, because frequently, things like this, all the work is put into it, and then somehow, just not much ever happens. In this case, we have set up an resiliency commission that's going to be headed up by our Fleet and Facilities Manager, and will include a number of staff members on it. And we have yet to figure out exactly what the meeting dates will be, but this looks like something that will truly be implemented. And I think everyone should really be congratulated for that. And I'll just also comment that I was initially very startled that no one seemed to think agriculture was important. And I thought about it a bit, and I realized there are an awful lot of people who just think that food magically appears in the grocery store, and whatever happens with agriculture, it'll still be there. I'm glad that an acknowledgement was made of the fact that agriculture is really critical for all of us. And I'm very relieved that it has been included as a part of this overall plan. But anyhow, thank you so very much. And I would like to move that we adopt this environmental climate resiliency plan.
It's my pleasure to second this.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And again, thank you for being here. And there were a lot of people involved, as you note, and many thanks to them. Really appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. If you can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of adopt, I'm sorry. I don't have anyone. But we do have one. Ah, yes, Ms. Bierman from the Assistant Director of Planning.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you. Good morning.
I just wanted to just say thank you again for hearing this and being prepared to adopt it and make this commitment to the county to be more resilient. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bierman. Appreciate you. Other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the Climate Resiliency Plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Now, we will move on to public comment. This item is reserved for discussion of matters that are not on our agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please give your name and county of residence. Mr. Whitecart, so TSD, we do not need to put a timer. Mr. Whitecart's here with the Capital Improvement Board. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you very much, and good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here with Doug Bruce and Joyce Poling. Joyce is familiar to you as a former member of the county commissioners. Doug is with Tabor Bruce Architects, and Doug is our vice president of our board. Joyce is the secretary. Doug is the city council representative on our board and our only architect, which has been critically important as we move forward with a project like this. And not with us, but near us is the recently resurrected Dave Askins, who I understand rumor has it, is soon to be again holding all of us publicly accountable for all the things that we do, and that's a critical service in our community. We are here today, and I wish that Thank You Very Much slide were still up. We are here today, for one thing, we want to note that there's a lot of public attention right now to the city council and the fact we're going forward with bonding, and we've been through a lot of the city council processes. But we are here today because we want to express our recognition of and appreciation for the county in this process, in fact, for the primacy of the county in this process. The 31 years of stewardship that the county has had in the convention center, support for the convention center, your creation of our board, the Capital Improvement Board, which led to the inter-local agreement, which was not an easy process. I mean, for any of you, we've been through, I've been involved in all of this for a number of years, and I know how difficult that has been, primarily for the confidence and support that you have shown our board. We just want to know that we recognize that, and we appreciate it. We recently went through formally adopting a name for the new convention center, and I've spoken with a couple of you about that already. And I want to express my appreciation for your understanding of how that moved forward. The name Bloomington Convention Center isn't a marketing tool. It's a branding tool for promoting the convention center to an external audience. We created a committee, and they gave us lots of advice, and they were very unanimous and quickly reached consensus about how important location and use were in terms of that name and for our external marketing. We are here to say to you what I've said to you privately, and that's to express our public commitment to honoring the legacy of Monroe County in the convention center and in moving forward with a new convention center, in honoring the history of it, in honoring that contribution. And we intend to do that in a number of different ways. And we'll have lots of times to talk, lots of time to talk about that. But historical plaques on the exterior of the current building, plaques on the interior of the new building, literature that we'll make available to our visitors. And the second thing we will do in terms of our marketing and promotion to an internal audience is make sure that our community never forgets the contribution of Monroe County to this project, and that our visitors are made aware of that at all times. So again, we are just here to let you know and assure you and restate our commitment to you that we appreciate what you've done, and we intend to honor that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you, and thank you for being here. And just on behalf of the board, thank you to every member of the Capital Improvement Board and your stewardship of it. You've all done amazing work in very fast, in a very short timeframe. You've done it quickly, but not rushed it, right? It's been expedient, but careful and thoughtful. And there's, there have been 20, how many, 28 meetings, public meetings now?
Thirty-one, actually.
Thirty-one, sorry.
But that's all right. I keep count. I don't expect you to.
Yeah. And you noted that the city council is voting on the bond. They're doing that at their next meeting? Is that correct?
They're voting on the bond Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, March 5th, which is the final, the final process.
Okay. All right. Good deal. Thank you so much. Let's see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it's wonderful to hear that things have finally reached this stage. I'd like to congratulate all of you who have worked so hard at this. I think this is a situation that shows if you just don't give up and keep on trying, you'll eventually get somewhere. And in particular, thank you for keeping the county in mind. This is something that we have worked hard with for many, many years, and we worked really hard to bring it to this point. And I appreciate your thoughtfulness, all of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes, this is an example where, since I've been here for six weeks now, I cannot take credit for any of this. And I will just, again, reaffirm my colleagues' thanks and gratitude to everyone who stood in these shoes before, and everyone, it takes a huge staff to move these projects along. And so thank you very much for your stewardship and for your oversight, and so myself and future generations can enjoy this.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, really appreciate it. And, you know, one of the things I know we talked about was making sure that the civic center side of it is part of, not necessarily the public-facing naming, but the building naming itself, interior, somewhere, and connecting that to Monroe County, I think, would be really great, because it really is the county civic center as well. But I know, it doesn't sell. Nobody cares. Nobody wants to know. Nobody knows Monroe County versus Bloomington. I get it. And, you know, that's been hard for people to get who've heard about this. But we have to appeal to an audience of people who know the city and not the county. And then, once they're here, they can learn about the county, you know?
And I appreciate your mentioning the civic use, because we've designed a building that has those civic use opportunities involved with it. And that's part of the marketing we need to do to our internal audience. So we have an external audience who's going to come here from places all around, we hope, to use the convention center. But we have an internal audience of our Monroe County residents, and we need to make sure they understand the availability and the civic use of this building.
And again, I do appreciate that you, the nod to the historical caretaking of this space and keeping this property going, and not just going, but going strong. And it's not loping along. It's doing well. And it's doing so well, it needs more space. And that's, you know, but the county council is one that passed the food and beverage tax. Obviously, we've been taking care of this building as it is now, including putting American Rescue Plan Act investments into the infrastructure, not the pretty stuff, but HVAC and things like that. So necessary stuff. So again, thank you for all your hard work.
Well, and your mention of the contribution, there were many things that were on the list for the current building that we needed to take a look at as we did the expansion. And that commitment by the county of those funds were enabled us to take some things off our list, because they were absorbed by that contribution.
Excellent.
So thank you again very much.
Thank you. And thank you for your constant, consistent communication with us. Appreciate you. Anyone else who wishes to offer public comment for an item not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for February 20th, 2025.
We have a motion?
I second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? I sent one, I think it was last night. I don't know.
I sent one as well, but that's, yeah, those are all fine.
Great. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for February 20th, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, February 27th, 2025.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second to approve the claims docket. We have Ms. Janay Tremble here from the Auditor's Office to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Morning. The accounts payable claims docket for February 27th, 2025 totals $8,634,798.06. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Madeira?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't have any either. See if there's any public comment on this item. You may raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket, accounts payable, February 27th, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. We did not receive any reports for today, so let us move on to new business, please.
Move approval of AVI Systems, Inc., an agreement for courtroom 313 audio system retooling. Fund name, 2023 GeoBond. Fund number, 4817, in the amount of $32,488.16.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Crone?
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to open by noting for record, there's an error in the agenda request form I submitted. As far as the date, the date to be heard is from the previous one we did last fall on this. So I apologize for that mistake on the paperwork. We have two types of audio systems currently in our courtrooms. Larger courtrooms, such as our jury trial courtrooms, have an amplified recording system in those, meaning there's overhead speakers, there's extended mic systems. Then the other version we have is our smaller courtrooms that don't require the overhead speakers or the gallery mics. In August, the board approved that we could do courtroom 205, which is one of the smaller unamplified courtrooms, as a proof of concept of the new hardware and the systems working. That work was completed in January of this year. Happy to report that all the systems work well. The court reporters can actually transcribe the hearings now, which was becoming an extreme difficulty, to the point of almost impossible for them. So I've worked with court services to triage these courtrooms and try to figure out a sensible order of worst to best. And the one we're looking at completing next is courtroom 313, which is one of the jury courtrooms that requires amplification. So we'd like to do this room next as a proof of concept that this system will work under an amplified circumstance.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes. And I think you may have answered this once before. Can any of this equipment ultimately be moved?
Absolutely. Any of this equipment can be relocated to another facility by TSD staff with very minimal vendor input needed on that. So yes, we can, we can move it where we need to go with it exactly.
And I'm glad we're making life a little easier for the court reporters.
Commissioner Madeira?
Very important. If justice is going to be done, it must be heard as well. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for answering all the, I sent, I don't know how many questions I sent in one email, but I sent a bunch of questions. So thank you for answering all of those. You're, you're the best. I really appreciate it. And it is, it is good that this can be, this equipment can be moved to the new facility. That makes it, me feel a little bit better about it, because there are a lot of things, we had some claims today relating to keeping the justice building going as it is. And those are necessary things, and this is a necessary thing, but it's really a struggle to feel okay about putting money into a building that you're not going to keep. But I digress. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the AVI Systems, Inc., agreement for courtroom 313 audio system retooling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Motorola Service Agreement. Fund name, cumulative capital. Fund number, 1138, in the amount of $7,904.58.
I second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Crone?
Yes. So as it says in the, in the agenda request, the Spillman software that runs the backbone of our jail program, so the jail staff, the medical offices, all this used for inmate in processing, outtake, all the records go through that system. Additionally, we have entities such as the Victims Assistance Program, the Sheriff's App, and a few others that constantly pull that data to see release records, so that they can notify individuals if they need to. Currently, we're having a problem with that system. We migrated on to a new server last year with the help of Spillman. And what continuously happens is we've got a process in there, it's called a memory leak. And as these queries to these outside entities build up, the server basically slows down till it comes to a complete stop. The big problem with that is the minute it does that, that means all processes in that system for jail staff and all our supporting offices also comes to a stop. My network and systems administrators, as well as Spillman, have combed through the system, trying to identify the cause of this, and they've not been able to do so. So the only, the only course of action we have now is to pull up another server and have that, under other circumstances, pull it up, and then have Spillman migrate that data on there to try to get this working again.
Thank you so much. You make something so complicated understandable, comprehensible. Thank you. I appreciate that. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
That sounds so frustrating. I'm glad that we'll be able to end that frustration.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I know. There have been problems for a while, and I'm glad that a solution is being looked for. And thank you for explaining that so clearly.
Yeah, it really makes sense. All right. See if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Motorola Service Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Before you leave the podium, there was an email this morning about a Microsoft agreement.
I have a copy.
Okay, because we don't have anything else on the work session. Okay, so we're going to hear that at the work session. Okay. I just wanted to see what was going on. Okay. Thank you. I want to make sure we didn't miss it. Thanks.
Thanks. Bye.
Okay. Next item, please. Next item, please.
Move approval of Building Associates, Inc., agreement for the renovation of Suite 109 at Showers Building North. Fund name 2022 GeoBond, fund number 4815, in the amount of $130,700.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Kreider, tell us all about this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Building and Fleet Manager. Um, this past week, Jeff Cockrell and I reviewed the bid documents. Everything is in order, and we're ready to move forward, and if you don't mind, I'd like to read the Architect's Recommendation Letter. Um, February 13th, 2024, Dear Mr. Kre- that would be 2025, actually. Dear Mr. Kreider, we are pleased to recommend award to Building Associates, Inc., in the amount, as the most responsible and responsive bid for the renovations in Showers North Suite 109 for the Proactive M.D. Clinic in Showers North. We reviewed Building Associates, Inc.'s material and subcontractors list for the project and ha- have found it to be acceptable. Our firm has previous project experience working with Building Associates, Inc. on a range of projects and can speak to the care they put into their work and their ability to deliver a project on schedule. We recommend accepting Building Associate, Inc.'s base bid in the amount of $130,000, $130,700 for a total contract amount, which includes general trades, mechanical plumbing, fire protection, and electrical work for the completion of the renovation. And, uh, that was sent by Jane York, Spring Point Architects. This request is to enter into contract with Building Associates, Inc. in the amount of $130,700 to furnish all materials and labor and perform all work necessary to complete renovations to Suite 109 at North Showers, from office space to health clinic, in accordance with the bid documents prepared for this project.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, let's see if there are comments or questions. I have a few, but go ahead. Commissioner Jones?
No, I guess I'll wait.
Commissioner Medeira?
Um, do we have an estimated completion date? An, uh, an estimate?
I, I, we do. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was 60 days after the, uh, building permit.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and, um, that was actually, my question is, is, um, how quickly we can move on that first, the first part of it, getting that building permit, and, um, is that, we're ready to do that at this point? There's no more architectural work that has to be done?
No, we're ready. As soon as this is signed, I believe Building Associates, I asked, if I was responsible for the permit or them.
Yeah.
If it was me, it would already be rolling, but, um, Building, Building Associates will be reaching out to our Building Department.
Great. Yeah, I think that makes more sense. I, I think it's a better, better fit that way. Um, yeah. Um, so just so the public is aware, this is, um, for, um, the relocation of our current employee health clinic. Um, and this will provide a number of advantages, one of which is it frees up space in the health building for health department-related functions, and the states change their funding formulas, and, uh, we have more staff, so this makes sense to keep everybody in the same building. At the same time, moving the employee clinic over to, um, the Showers Building will be a great benefit to employees who can now drive to an appointment if they have to, right? If they're really not feeling well, nobody wants to walk four blocks or something like that, to, to go to a health clinic. So, um, so it's, it's going to be much more convenient, especially bringing families in and things like that, because there will be parking available right at the door, uh, which, which otherwise we'd rely on city meters, and that's not fair to our employees. So, uh, appreciate it. Um, uh, it's going to be a good thing to have done. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. May raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Building Associates, Inc. for the renovation of Suite 109, Showers Building North signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Um, I noted that there isn't anything on technology, um, in the bid at all, so I assume that our T S D department will be installing wiring?
So, I just received an email from Proactive M.D.'s architect person, Charles Swain, and he, the email was about, um, the technology drops, so I think I'm going to have to work with Charles and Greg and sort that out.
Perfect, perfect. That makes more sense, actually. Um, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Sorry, I thought of that question just as, yeah, it just comes up. Uh, all right, great. Uh, so, that is, um, the, uh, end of our regular agenda items under new business. I will, um, note that, uh, we continue to hold, um, office hours, um, and that's six times per month. I had to change mine for today to tomorrow, so, if somebody wants to talk to me tomorrow, it's tomorrow night. Um, but, uh, just go to the calendar at co.monroe.in.us, um, and, uh, find the meeting date you'd like to join. It's all via Teams. These can be private conversations, group conversations, uh, whatever you wish, but it's our opportunity to hear from you, um, about things we've done well, things you'd want to change, mostly that, or some great ideas. Um, there have been some really interesting ideas, um, shared in those meetings, so, uh, we encourage folks to attend and speak with one of us, um, at your convenience. Join us on Teams. Um, please, while you're at our county website, co.monroe.in.us, we invite you to click on the megaphone and sign up for the Resident Alert System. This will, um, allow you to choose text, email, or phone call notifications, or any combination thereof that you choose. Uh, we are heading into severe weather season, and it's a really great thing to have, uh, to keep you informed about local issues and local events. Um, we, um, did not have any appointments today, but we do still have a few, um, positions available on Boards and Commissions, and we hope folks will continue to look at that and, um, apply to serve. Uh, we are working with, um, Ivy Tech and the Red Cross to, to hold the blood drive. The next one is Tuesday, March 4th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Wednesday, March 5th, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. These are at Ivy Tech at Shreve Hall. We invite, uh, folks to make an appointment at redcross.org. Um, anything else for the good of the order?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, our next regular meeting is March 6th. Here we go, in the spring, and, um, we do have a work session. It is 10:42. Can we come back at 11:00 a.m. for the work session? Does that work for everybody? Perfect. Excellent. Thank you so much. We will resume at 11 o'clock with the work session. Thank you, T S D. Thank you, Katz, and thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.